I call this meeting to order. Please stand for the invocation given by Councilmember Byakowski.
Dear Lord, Christmas is a wonderful season. Thank you for this time when we can joyously celebrate Christmas together. This room is filled with people who reach out each day to help their community. Thank you for this fine group of council members and staff that I have the pleasure to work with. I pray that you would bless each one here, all those that are ill in all of the city of Batavia, with a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this is the conference meeting? Just to be specific, is there any public comments that anyone emailed you to read?
There were not.
Communications? The next City Council Conference and Business Meeting will be held Monday, January 11th, at 7:00 PM, City Health Council Boardroom, second floor, City Center. So we're doing another double in January? Is that because of the budget or is it just a conference meeting? Rachel? It's just a conference. Okay, so it's a typo on here, I thought so.
It's a business meeting, yes.
Business meeting.
It's a conference or business?
Business meeting.
Well, we're having a business conference, special conference and a business meeting tonight, right?
Yeah, so we'd have to have a conference before the business.
Right, so it'd be the conference meeting next January, right? Okay, well, I'm still missing something because we're, is today unusual business? Or was it normally supposed to be business and we lumped it?
It starts hammering, then goes business.
Okay, got it. All right, so it'll be the next business meeting will be held on the 11th at 7:00 PM. Not, not two, just one. All right, the City Center...
Hang on, what why don't we have in the conference meeting for that business?
That's what I kind of thought, but you guys would explain, I thought you guys...
No, right.
I guess if there were things on the conference that weren't advancing to business, they would then move to that business meeting.
Oh, okay.
So this is the conference for two business meetings, in a sense. And if we need a special conference, we'll, we'll just have one at that point. But right now, it's a scheduled business meeting. I mean, I hate to, I want to be specific because there, we do different business and conferences and we do different business and business meetings. And it is the first of the year, so it starts a whole new cycle, so...
So we should have a conference?
That's what I technically thought. So I wonder if our cycle of business conference is listed wrong on here? That's what my concern is.
We're gonna start the conference and we'll do this, just so we're clear.
Tonight?
Yes.
But I'm worried about the 11th that I just made an announcement for.
Let's see, that's just wondering where you...
You have me so confused, the end of January now.
Okay, let me just say this, we're having a conference, but today's a normal business meeting, we're having a special conference.
Yes, yes.
Okay? Now, in January, I would assume we would start with a regular conference meeting. So if we could please verify that for a later date when we do the announcement, I don't think we need to continue to discuss a year.
What's, what's...
We are having a meeting on the 11th, we'll figure it out.
Typically, if we were to have two meetings in December, what meeting would tonight's meeting be? That's how you can figure that out. Is, would tonight typically be a business meeting or a conference meeting?
Business tonight, yes.
Tonight would be business, then the next meeting would be a conference meeting followed by a business meeting. So technically, the order tonight should be business, conference, and then we follow up with a business meeting, the first meeting of January.
And then a conference.
It's the correct order.
Whatever they meant, the conference agenda here is on tonight's business meeting. So next meeting, we would have to have a conference meeting to start.
Right. The only way we'll have anything, Bob's right, the only way we'll have anything for our business meeting in January would be any holdover from tonight. If there's no holdover from tonight, then we wouldn't have any reason to have a business meeting. We could all sit here and tell jokes.
So here's what my...
I've got some good ones.
This schedule starts with business, it might have just been a typo, we'll figure it out, let's get out of my business. Okay? So, City Center's fault, malfeasibility stuff.
Can I make a presentation?
Okay, I'm gonna... Sorry for the confusion, but we'll figure it out.
Get out of the way, Gino. Now get out of the way.
My head will have too much reflection.
Does the screen have hurt?
No, I'll grab that, I just wanted to get the line right.
It's 2020, uh, it's 2020, what else could not come on, right?
Yay! Quick or ready?
Yeah, we're gonna have to use the air.
Okay. Thank you, Council President, members of council. I asked Ed Flynn of Lobella to come and present for us tonight information on the City of Batavia City Center Revitalization Plan. If you recall, the City Center feasibility study is a City Center Revitalization Plan and we were awarded a grant from Empire State Development. Also partners GCEDC put in funds for the study, the City of Batavia, and it was matched by National Grid. We've had a committee of seven or eight people, I think Ed will go over that. Eight, thank you. That have been working to not only determine some of the best ways to use the resources of the million-dollar DRI grant here at City Center, but also future components of what the interior of our City Center Mall and the entire campus could look like. So with that, I'll turn it over to the capable fans of Ed Flynn.
Thanks, Rachel, and hello, everyone, nice to be here tonight. As Rachel said, I'm gonna give a presentation on the City Center Feasibility Study. The main objective of that, like Rachel said, was to focus on how we're going to spend the $1 million that the state's gonna give us through the DRI program. But we also looked at other things besides just the mall property, for the mall building itself, we looked at the site and potential redevelopment of the site as well. So, I know you guys have a busy agenda, so I wanna spend 10 minutes, hopefully, discussing the project with you and the agenda tonight, technology can work perfectly. But talk about who's involved, who's on the steering committee, then go over a little bit of an overview of the project goals for the project. Then we'll go into some of the illustrations and concepts we put together. After that, we'll discuss what the cost estimates were for some of those concepts, as well as how some of the site development's gonna impact the marketing. Then we're gonna talk about the prospectus, which is a marketing piece we put together to provide information on the mall, on funding that's available so that folks can want to invest in the mall or invest at the City Center site, add information in all of one place. And then Rachel, and turn it back to Rachel, she's gonna talk about the availability of the staff to put together the engineering and RFP and get the project started. So who was involved in the project? We had an eight-member advisory committee made up primarily of staff from the city, as well as folks from the Batavia Development Corporation, the Economic Development Corporation, the BID, as well as National Grid. All of the funders for the project did provide the match from the committee, so they provided some good input to make sure we got a good product at the end. For those of you who haven't met me, I am Ed Flynn, I'm the Director of Planning at Lobella Associates, I know most of you, but we were the lead consultant on the project. We worked with George and his firm for the legal part of the project, and then we worked with Project Communications to put together the prospectus. During the process, we've kept the stakeholders and the community engaged. We had one public meeting about two months ago. We've also met with the mall owners twice, including once this afternoon at 2:00. We also met with Bank of Castile, Bank of America, as well as the farmers market to give them information on the project. And of course, we kept all the funders engaged through the process, so because we know that the $1 million can go just so far, there's other things that could be done and we want to make sure they're engaged so we can potentially get some funding in the future. So a little bit of an overview of the project goals. One of the main goals was to make sure we had comprehensive and complete information about the mall, all in one place. Whenever a developer or investor comes into the city, or he's coming into the Batavia Development Corporation, you have to basically scramble to get all the information about the mall and about funding opportunities. And we wanted to make sure we had all of that in one place. As we said before, we wanted to make sure we defined and coordinated the DRI grant fund. We wanted to make sure that we could at least do what the DRI intended to do with the project, for the million dollars, and I think we had some good news about that. With that, we provided cost estimates and we wanted to make sure we have a project or plan that again can get additional funding, because again, the million dollars has gone so far. As they said, we've been engaging the community and stakeholders all along. We also wanted to make sure we complied with the mall agreements, which were recently executed. And we did it, you know, at a great time, we paid a lot, the stars are aligned at this point. You've got the agreement in place, executed for the City Center. You've got the $1 million in DRI funding, and you've got a ton of other projects either in the pipeline or in the works downtown that are gonna complement each other as they happen. So before I go into the concepts, I wanted to talk a little bit about the intent of the DRI. So, the City Center project was a priority project from the Downtown Revitalization Initiative, and as stated in the project sheet that we put together for it, it would be a $1.5 million project with a $1 million grant. And the general scope was to remove or replace the floor tile that had an underplay since it was built, and it's inconsistent, to do painting on the walls and columns and the cross beams. Also, to, a major one is to remove and replace the silo entryways, which have never really been very attractive and have been very functional. But there's also some thoughts about having some low-level lighting on some of the columns. And your match at $500,000 was the roof upgrades you've already done. So you've done your part in terms of the match, and now the state comes in with the $1 million DRI grant. So some of the concepts that we came up with was, like I said, to replace, remove and replace all of those silo entryways with new attractive entryways that are a little bit more functional, have a head roof for our winters, they have a lot of snow. And so we have four right now. Three would be replaced with a entrance that looks like this, a little bit attractive. This is the Main Street entrance. The fourth one is, if you look at the bottom right-hand corner, you'd have two entrances within about 50 feet each other on Main Street. So that second entrance on the right would just be flush with Main Street, it wouldn't get the same treatment. But it would be a lot more functional, it would have a hair-type lock, so the weather wouldn't get into the mall. And obviously, it would be compatible with the facades of what most folks have been doing at the mall with the new red brick facade. With the conference, the main objectives there were to replace the flooring there, as well as doing some of the painting on the concourse walls and the columns. The replacement of the flooring, obviously, would be all consistent now. You would have two parts of the mall floor that did match. The look of it would be similar to, and imitate some of the street skate improvements we've done on the outside of the mall, so it would have a brick look. And then, of course, you could paint the columns and the cross beams as well. It's also showing private facade improvements, and we'll talk a little bit more about that, but the public improvements, or the city's improvements, would be the flooring and the painting. One item we, you know, we've talked about for probably five to seven years between the DRI project and as well as the Brownfield Opportunity Area concept, was to do some kind of development in the under-regularized space in the east side of City Parking Lot along Bank Street, as well as doing some traffic counting. So, these are just some initial drawings we did when we were doing the DRI with the BOA, but we've advanced that a little bit, and we've developed a concept for doing a mixed-use project at the corner of Alva and Bank Street, south of Alva Street. So it would be basically adjacent to where the potential police station could go. On the upper floors, it would be housing, on the bottom floors, it would be commercial. If the market doesn't support the commercial because of all the changes with COVID, that could be potentially converted to residential as well. So that'd be about a 7,000 square foot building, three stories. What this is also showing is our potential improvements to Bank Street to do a little bit of traffic counting there, it's pretty wide, as everyone knows. But to bring some of the improvements that have happened on Main Street, like the bump outs, the enhanced crosswalks, some of the landscaping onto Bank Street as well to activate Bank Street. So, those were the pretty pictures, how much does it actually cost and what are the impacts on the market? So, the public concourse improvements that we showed you, the total cost with all the contingencies with all of the design would be 1.175 million. So that's, again, removing and replacing the entryways and doing the flooring and the painting. A little, you know, pencil sharpening, you could probably get to that million-dollar DRI request, and there wouldn't be any additional city funding going into the project, and you would satisfy the needs of the DRI, and also satisfy the needs of all of the mall agreements as well. Okay, this is not the city cost, but it's a cost to the private owners to improve the interior facades of the buildings and also improve the exterior facades. So to do all of those facades in the interior of the mall would be around $880,000. A lot of that, though, is for, you know, big, like J.C. Penney, that has a lot of facade. Most of the smaller facades could probably be done for between $25,000 to $50,000 each, because they have, as you know, they're not very big in terms of their frontage. For the exterior, the same thing, that's about $600,000, and that's the entire mall around the mall. Just, I wanted to note that if you were just to focus some of the exterior facade improvements on the mall, you only have two buildings left that have not had a facade improvement on the Main Street facade. That would be $294,000. And so you would have, if you were able to do that, plus the entryways, the entire Main Street facade would be completely changed and be compatible with, I think, the rest of downtown. Talked to Rachel, I've talked to Andrew, there is a potential to get some grant funding to help some of those owners do this type of work. Right now, Andrew and the city are doing two different building agreement programs that provide up to 75% of funding for those improvements. So, we're rounding, finishing up one now, and then, so there is an opportunity to apply for some additional funding for those type of improvements. And this is not a cost to the city, this is a benefit to the city for the mixed-use project. For that 70,000 square foot building, it'd be an investment of around $19 million at that site. Obviously, there'd be a lot of tax revenue that would be created as part of that. But also with all the new folks living downtown and some of their professional activity, you know, creating a lot of vitality downtown, it'll start to enclose that Bank Street, which is pretty wide over there. So when we met with the mall, one of the questions they had were parking effects. And so we looked at not only the mixed-use development at Bank and Alva, but we also included the police station and how much space that would take up. So we looked at what the supply of parking is around the mall, which would include all of the off-street parking, as well as all of the on-street parking on Bank, Washington, and Main Street. And so when you put that together, there's about 743 spaces altogether, with the police station and the mixed-use building. And as you can see, the building would go over, most of it would go over the Bank of America drive-thru, which we've talked to them about, so it wouldn't be taking up any existing parking. But there still would be a movement of that part of that drive-thru to the Bank of America building behind the building. And to do that, that's gonna take up about 10 spaces. So in total, about 153 spaces those buildings would take up, and some of the parking toward the police station as well. I do have in italics there the new mixed-use building. One of the reasons I have that is because there could potentially be parking underneath that building, where, so that number 32 could go down. And then the bank drive-thru is a priority requirement, most banks are not, don't have drive-thrus anymore, so there may not be, be a need for a drive-thru at the Bank of America, so... So what you have left over, after you subtract that out, you have 590 spaces left, more than enough to meet the requirements of the mall agreements. And one thing I noted at the bottom, so when the healthy living campus gets developed, the YMC is gonna be part of that, and they'll have their own parking at that site. So right now, at the peak, views probably between 10:00 and 12:00 in the morning, it's estimated they're taking up about 150 spaces. A lot of those spaces are being taken up at the City Center site. So, you know, there will be a relief of parking demand on the site when that healthy living campus is built, and that is probably gonna be built before or during, whenever the police station or the mixed-use building would be built. And then finally, we did put together, like we said in the beginning, one of the goals was to get all of the information about the mall into one place. And one of the things we did was we put together a prospectus, which has information about the mall, about downtown, about the market for office use or residential use, retail use in the downtown. And also information on funding, context, all in one place in a nice, attractive document. I have a draft here, but I haven't brought it to the committee yet for their review, but it's a really nice, attractive document, so when an investor comes into the city, wants to talk to Andrew or wants to talk to Rachel about investing in the mall or at the site, they have all that information in one place. So before Rachel talks, I think that the takeaway from this is, one, with the project, you're gonna be able to satisfy both the DRI and the mall agreement objectives and all the agreements within there. You're also gonna be able to potentially develop some lots on the outside, portions of the lot at the City Center and create some tax revenue. And I think those are the main takeaways, and also that you have enough funding to actually do what you need to do at the mall with the DRI fund. That's my summary, and if, I don't know if you want to talk about the city staff capacity right now?
I will, and then I'll open it up for questions. So, just to note, so council is aware, there's still a portion of roof of the mall that needs to be completed, that's the portion, and I'm sure you've heard Matt Worth talk about it several times, down by Dan's tire. So that project has an estimate, and I believe it's already been designed and engineered, and will go out to bed maybe in the spring, Ray, if that's appropriate. So, just so council is aware, that portion does need to be finalized to satisfy the agreement with the mall merchants. And then, as that moves forward, that'll give us time to really hone in and focus on getting an RFP out for design and engineering later in 2021 for this project. So this isn't coming up right away, there's still some work that needs to be done. I'd like to welcome Mr. Ray Tor, is our new head of DPW tonight. He'll have a lot going on, so we want to make sure we're not overwhelming his schedule. So this isn't, the design and engineering for this isn't moving forward tomorrow. There'll be time between now and next fall to really hone in on exactly what we want to do. But I'd like to open it up for questions to myself, Ed Flynn.
Yeah, I have two questions, Ed. Number one, the exterior facade improvements, is this voluntary or is this something we're gonna have to force down people's throats? I mean, some people, probably, they're kinda hurt, especially after this year, we'll be lucky if they're still there.
Yeah, it would be voluntary, but of course, we'd probably help them with some designs that inspire them to do the work. And obviously, a 75% reimbursement is a good incentive to do that. You know, we're administering a ton of building renovations, building renovation programs across the state, and we thought that COVID would stop that, but as people are continuing their building renovations because they're positive that, in hope that the future's gonna be better.
We all are.
Can I follow up to that question as well?
Sure.
So the two on Main Street that currently are not completed would be the properties at Hillside.
Hillside and the theater.
And also the city-owned property where Harvester Theater 56 will go in, which is later on our agenda tonight on the Main Street Grant Application. Thank you.
And the other thing, it looks like we have more as a sample part of something, if we don't require any more property and we use all the space around Alva for the police station, am I correct, we'll still need all our required rooms for the parking?
Yes, you're supposed to have 155 spaces within the 400-foot radius of J.C. Penney's site, and you have more than that.
Way more. Okay, great, thanks.
Question, Brad. The inside, I mean, I know it's just, we're just throwing ideas out there, but I don't know, and you might want to reevaluate the brick floor with the brick walls. I mean, it's gonna be, I mean, you're talking strollers and handicapped individuals, people with disabilities, that bumpy brick. If it looks like a brick and it's smooth, that's one thing. If it's truly like a brick pavement, it's, that could be a nightmare, maintenance, somebody drops up and cracks a brick. I mean, I'd like, personally, in my opinion, just a suggestion, do something else with the floor, the brick walls are fine, but I don't know, brick, brick, brick might be too much.
It's a brick appearance, it's not as, you know, brick.
Right, you know what I'm saying?
For everything you just said, it's not for real brick.
But you wouldn't want to have even the channels in it or the brick look, because that's gonna collect dirt and it's not gonna be clean. I'm just trying to look ahead, we don't want it to come back like the roof or the facade. We have to think about, oh, it's ugly, it's not working, it's collecting dirt, we can't clean it because it's got these grooves in it, just a thought.
Yeah, it's maybe some kind of tile system, but maybe some kind of...
Something that could buff it and shine up and clean up and looks spiffy and look like, sorry, that's whatever. Just a small suggestion.
Road lights. Road lights. With the theater, wasn't some of their plans to actually do the facade as well, or no?
The original plan and intent was to complete facade work, but as they got into their architecture and engineering, they realized that the entire project cost was going to be internal. So they had not, did not have any funds to commit to the exterior of that building. And that's why Andrew will present to you later this evening on the special conference agenda, not the conference agenda, the, the intent for them to look at a Main Street grant to complete that facade work. Yep.
I wasn't aware.
No, you're, you're absolutely right.
When they show the original drawings and it's got this grand entrance...
And that's what's hard about rendering, so I'll just caution, because I always fall into the trap of it's gonna look like that, well, no, that's, that's a rendering of what it could look like, so...
Let somebody do a rendering of what I'm gonna look like at my old age then. Phenomenal.
All right, everyone else? Is that it? Thank you very much. You're doing very highly. Do we need that, that thing down for a camera? All right. Thank you for that presentation, that's good news that we're moving forward and that the City Center is gonna get a makeover at some point, so it's gonna be a good thing. So, do we need to move any, this is just the presentation, we're not moving it for any future decision at this point.
Just for information.
Okay, appoint members to various city committees and boards.
The people that we've appointed are definitely City of Batavia residents.
This is for Historic Preservation Commission? And these are to get vacancies taken care of? Anybody have any quick...
How many people total applied to be on the board?
Just those two?
Yeah.
Just those two, we didn't get any others, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we're doing our best to encourage, I mean, if anybody is, knows of anybody that wants to get involved in the community, there's plenty of boards that come up on occasion, please volunteer.
Time to the times, you know?
Well, I'm sorry. We need their help because it brings us good information so we can make decisions on how we want to go as a community.
But these were the only two.
They are the only two, and they're excellent. Ryan Duffy actually runs the home land office. So, and Connie's a former legislature.
Exactly, yes.
So any other concerns about that? So are we in consensus to move that to, I believe, tonight's business meeting, correct? So we're on consensus for that? That gets moved over? The next thing on the item, uh, agenda is the, uh, appointing a part-time city court judge. So the original resolution was Xed out in your packet, but, um, we have the, uh, regular resolution here now, which names, um, Mr. Thomas Burns to be appointed to deposition. Any questions or concerns? So are we, go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, well, I, I have some concerns because of previous activities. I see a, uh, a passbook between the part-time judge and the elected judge. And I certainly would want to be participating, putting anyone in this position. Also, I just question the capricious interest with the part-time judge's wife working through the public defender's, uh, department. And so many cases in front of court today are being defended by the public defenders.
George, that's right.
Members appointed should counsel decide to do that will have to abide by the New York State laws for judges' judicial conduct, which includes conflict interest requirements. So whether that's an existing judge or a new judge to be appointed, that's a requirement. Whatever the issue is relative to his spouse, that potential judge, they too would have to abide by New York State laws that exist regardless of their experience with their complex opinions. So, um, I would say respectfully, I don't think it's out of the norm where you would have a smaller community, a big-sized community that has close connections amongst the big family who are on the bench. So O C A will certainly through its oversight, the administration of the New York State laws of judges, uh, will, will ensure that those requirements are met. And it's a responsibility of the judge, should they be appointed, and take the oath of office to comply with the requirements, uh, of the court.
So if I'm not mistaken, it's kind of a similar situation right now. So it's working just fine. So, I don't know, there's, it's not uncommon for, uh, I've looked into this myself. It's not uncommon for, uh, you know, attorneys to be possibly married and conduct business and keep confidentiality, and they're professionals and they know how to do that. And that's, that's an ethical issue and, and I'm sure it works out just fine in most cases.
Well, in the current, uh, full-time, uh, judge also has a wife who's also an attorney as well. So, uh, I'm, at some point in time, she may have to come in front of that court. And her husband being sitting on the bench, there's, at that point, an ethical issue.
Right, so that would be, there's rules for that. It's not the first time it's been addressed. And they're, and I'm sure they would be very careful to make sure that.
I really enjoyed his resume and the fact that, uh, he, a member of the community has been here all of his life. And I really, uh, I thought it was great that, uh, he applied for it. And I was really impressed with the gentleman. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, so we had consensus to move that towards tonight's business meeting for both? Okay, that moves forward. Um, submission here at State Main Street Grant by the Batavia Development Corporation. Good deal.
Hey, Detective President, where are we, the council? Um, yeah, so a, as we sort of discussed earlier about the city center feasibility study, uh, and Rachel also talking about the facade work and some of the theater details. Um, you know, we reviewed the projects, the D R I, the Building Improvement Fund, the New York Main Street, and prospective projects. Uh, and we'd like to recommend for the winter twenty-twenty round of the New York Main Street Grant Program, uh, we apply for Batavia Players Theater Fifty-Six to help them with their project. Uh, as Rachel stated, uh, the project as it has progressed has increased substantially in cost to the point that the interior work, the architectural and design, um, demolition and contingency is closer to a million dollars from the original estimate of the entire project being around nine hundred to ten hundred and ten thousand. As you can see from the memo, uh, the B D C has been very successful in, in administering the New York Main Street Grant projects and programs in the past. Uh, somewhere in the two and a seven point two-five million dollars has been invested into our downtown through these programs, public and private investments. Uh, the Theater Fifty-Six project, um, needs to close the gap in its, in its funding and its grant sources. So in order to build that facade, which was estimated to cost around three hundred thousand dollars, um, this will greatly improve their chances of that Main Street-facing facade being completed. Um, and, you know, like the rendering stated, however, as Rachel also said, it may not be exactly that, but something of that nature. Um, this also ties into the city center, uh, project in the terms of National Grid Grant, Main Street Grant that we were able to obtain. Uh, that grant is pretty much contingent on that facade work being completed as well. Uh, Batavia Players also secured an R L F loan through the B D C of the city, uh, which then also greatly increases their capability to pay that loan back and refinance the R L F loan. Um, so we looked at all the different projects. We thought that this was the most impactful, um, and sort of had a trickle-down effect to the other projects that are going on. Uh, so before you tonight, uh, you do have the resolution to show support for the B D C to apply for the New York Main Street Grant, um, which I do ask that you consider it for approval.
So what do we actually do by supporting that? That's some, some kind of a pass-through or is that, how does that actually work?
Yeah, so, well, it, it's a necessary step in the application process. So in order for us to apply, uh, the municipality, local municipality has to support the application.
Like a ladder of support type thing or just?
This resolution, this resolution suffices for that, correct? Um, yeah, so ultimately, we would be in, in the sense of pass-through, um, for, for this grant.
And to be clear, the B D C would be the pass-through?
Yes.
Right, 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 that's a, we're just doing a resolution supporting.
Yeah, it'll go through the application file.
Right. It doesn't financially hold us to anything or require us to give money to anyone?
No.
Okay. Any other questions? Rose.
Mr. Frye, how much have we ever received in property tax or sales tax from any of these projects? You have any kind of figure? It seems like we're always getting money, but how much are we getting in return?
Well, it, it's, I, it would be difficult to nail that number down in terms of property tax and the commerce tax that comes into that because business, you know, operates, uh, out of that building. However, I can tell you that through the projects that we're doing right now, uh, the D R I, the Building Improvement Fund, and the New York Main Street Project Project, uh, we are looking at somewhere around sixty-five million dollars of total investment, public and private, into our downtown infrastructure. So a lot of these grants rehabilitate our buildings or revamp our buildings that allow these businesses to come in and operate or bring in more residents to our downtown that hopefully ultimately increase tax on the, to the city.
But it still doesn't answer my question.
I, I would have to do some research to get back to you on that.
So please get back to me on that. It'd be interesting because that, you know, I've been wondered about that. Thank you.
I think an important point, I mean, Mr. President, when you enhance building and you put these improvements up, then the building, the next round assessment, the property value is going to increase substantially. I know of a case of a person.
Show me the money.
No, no, the property value.
Show me the money.
And I know a case of a person I knew that took some type of grants and proved the property and never considered that, that he couldn't afford the property, though he values one of some.
Well, he's a major project. That, that gets assessed immediately when you get building permits and why not, so.
Unless you're getting a tax break.
Yeah, well, I mean, like I said, that's a good question. If we can research it, get back to us. I mean, I mean, that's, that's important because we're doing, and like you said, the sixty-five million dollars of improvements and investment in downtown is part of that. Is the goal is to increase the assessed value to continue our revenue stream because we are always looking for safe, effective ways to increase our revenue, whether it be sales tax, property tax, things like that. Without raising taxes, you can improve the property and now your values are higher, so your taxable values are higher.
Unless you're getting a tax break.
Well, not, I don't think all the downtown people are.
If you're getting, you can, you can make your properties valuable as possible, but if you're getting a tax break, if you get a tax break, you could have gold and marble and you're not going to pay anything.
So if you could, uh, if you could look into that, just to get back to us, that's a good question to know if these investments are going out and they're coming back and they're getting some kind of value back out of it.
Absolutely.
Is there anything else you'd like to continue on?
Do you know, I have just a question back to Rachel in regards to the facade of the theater. Uh, since we're talking about, uh, improvements to the overall facade of the mall itself, when, once the theater makes those facade changes, uh, I mean, theater's been around forever. Um, but if something happened and the theater no longer existed and now we have a vacant building, will those outside facade improvements, uh, blend in with the rest of the facade improvements that we're doing right now as far as eliminating the silos and putting something else up? I guess that would be my concern. Because I don't want to see us down the road, all of a sudden having another, uh, mall parcel that's available and, and a different business comes in and it, that facade really doesn't match anything and it doesn't, it's not appropriate for the business to be in.
Well, I think it's a great point, but I do think that the Planning and Development Committee, because there is external work being done, would have to approve it. So I think they would want to make sure it maintains character. Um, however, and we can't plan for what's next, you know? Do I think it's going to be outlandish? No, no. Do I think it's going to fit in and maybe some brand new glasswork, um, something that improves the, but it's a great point to bring up.
Well, knowing the people that are involved with the theater, and I know that, uh, well, I know that obviously they would want things to, to look right with the other exterior buildings as well. That would just be a concern down the road because again, we don't want to be faced with more improvements to the mall later on down the road.
Sure.
But it brings up a good point. I mean, when we do these improvements, we know the ones we're responsible for, we're going to match the brick. But if other, the two parcels that aren't, uh, are they going to be required to match that brick or could they go to a different colored brick? And now, I mean, it's almost like an ordinance, uh, thing that it should match the character. So I would hope that the planning committee would make sure it's the same close enough type of brick so someone doesn't drive down the street and say, that building looks fine, but that is like a really funny brick over there. And now we're back to that mixture we have now, which is the silos with the nice brick. You know what I mean? So I would like to see some continuity there or required continuity there so that at least the Main Street portion lines up with the rest of Main Street. I don't know if that's possible or how that would be done, but I mean.
I'd have to look into what the, um, the code says now, but we do have design guidelines for Main Street projects. So specifically for this one, they would have to utilize our design guidelines.
That would save, that would, that would save, that would answer my question.
And having the B D C as the sponsor of the project would help ensure that they have, uh, a guiding hand in how the design of that looks. So it's not going to be like Art Deco nineteen seventy, you know, it's.
You know, it should match, I mean, you know, by.
It's in the character, but also stand out.
Because all natural ability, it's already kind of gone down a path. Individuals improving their storefronts the way they want it. And it seems to match right now, and I would like to keep that going.
And, and to your point, just to be clear, we don't have a pathway for the Hillside building to do improvement at this point.
Right.
So just, just one property with this resolution. Um, but certainly I know Andrew's looking at different grid first.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's a goal to look forward to future, no doubt. Anyone else have any questions or concern? Okay, so are we in consensus to move that, uh, supporting of that grant application to tonight's business meeting?
Yes.
Okay, that gets moved. Okay, um, a motion to adjourn the conference. Mr. Bailey, second to none, Mr. Canelli. Do you would call the roll, please?
House Member Bailey?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Karas?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jen Housekay?
Yes.
Okay, now to order the business meeting. You've all been given a copy of the twenty-twenty October financials. Are there any questions or concerns? So those, uh, we accept those, we approve those? Okay, those get approved. You've all received a copy of the October twenty-twenty minutes? Are any questions or concerns or omissions or misstatements in there you'd like to have corrected? Okay, so are we in consensus to approve the October twenty-twenty minutes?
Yes.
Agenda items. Item eighty-five twenty-twenty, the city manager, um, investment policy, or moving the city manager's power to the investment policy. Mr. Byakowski. The eighty-six twenty-twenty resolution to grant New York State Department of, uh, B D C access for the action on Batavia Iron and Metal Site. Mr. Canelli. Eighty-seven twenty-twenty, the Empire Access Fiber Agreement. Mr. McGinnis. Eighty-eight twenty-twenty, the regular council business meetings through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one. Ms. Pacino. Eighty-nine twenty-twenty, the Architectural Resources for Engineering, the D R I, Jackson Square. Mr. Karas. Ninety twenty-twenty, the various committees and boards. Mr. Bailey. Uh, ninety-one twenty-twenty, the part-time city court judge. Ms. Christian. And ninety-two twenty-twenty, the Main Street Grant for Batavia, uh, we just talked about it. Batavia Development Corp., the Main Street Grant.
I'm sorry, that was Mr. Bailey.
Yeah, Mr. Bailey, yes. Uh, attorneys report?
Yes, gentlemen, members of council. Since we last reported, the general categories, the matters that we've worked on are across the spectrum as usual, as has been the case this year and most other years. Uh, a variety of contract matters, a number of municipal questions from multiple departments from the city, coordinating with the city manager's office as well as the police department staff and chief with respect to the police reform group, which has been very active this year, um, working on a variety of real estate matters and contract matters. Um, the one thing I wanted to point out to council that, that at this point in time is actually one matter we have not worked on recently, and that is code enforcement cases and the code enforcement docket. Um, because of what's going on this year with COVID, the courts and shutdowns as well as deferrals and circumstances with respect to evictions and utility shut-offs. It seems as though the court system in New York has put the code dockets on hold for the time being. Um, after courts started opening up again in late summer, early September, our anticipation was that we were going to continue working with the city court clerk and the court system on the code dockets, which are brought forward by the Department of Public Works and the code officers. However, um, prior to the actual first code docket this fall, that was shut down by the courts. And we have actually not had any indication, despite some outreach, as to when that might be restarted. Uh, so I just wanted to mention at the council that the code dockets themselves seem to be frozen in place. Unfortunately, like much else this year, which could very easily create a backlog in twenty-twenty-one, along with, uh, a number of other matters that were stayed or deferred by virtue of executive orders. So this wasn't specific to an executive order from Albany, but it was essentially put on hold by the court system such that we can't have access to the courts for those matters. So again, I just wanted to point that out to council in case there was a question and highlight that that's something we have not been able to work on.
Yeah, so if someone has a code issue and they're wondering why, there's nothing been done about it, we're kind of, that's kind of one of those things that's been put on the back burner doing the executive.
Well, and, and just to clarify, the code officers are still doing their jobs on a day-to-day basis. They're addressing violations and follow-up to the extent that they can. Uh, the issue though is we do not presently have access to the code docket on a monthly basis at, at this.
So the due process part of it, of answering the charge is not being done, is what you're saying?
Correct.
I have a question, Mr. President. Uh, I had a call today from a person who's a property owner. They initiated eviction proceedings for non-paying tenant before COVID. Then right before COVID hit, the court said, we're not hearing any tenant. What is the status of that now on prior COVID eviction proceedings? And the court's here now?
My general sense, and I haven't looked at this recently, but a lot of that was deferred until the end of the year, if not in January, as to, uh, the eviction proceedings. And the court basically took the position that they weren't going to issue eviction orders for a variety of matters. So again, it's, it's kind of in part with what's going on with the code docket and utility shut-offs and things of that sort, uh, where these matters just aren't available to pursue through the normal course. Uh, so there's going to be.
In this particular, in this particular case, the tenant's not only not paying around, he's turned around and started sub-running a couple rooms. He's making a profit.
You know, now he can't evict the sub later either because he can't evict.
He doesn't, he doesn't have a contract.
Yeah, I would take that a step further, just anecdotally, is, um, New York State Bar Association's put together a task force to assist with, uh, rent negotiation, lease negotiations on the property tenants. So it's a bit of a. So it's a bit of a double landing from the standpoint of landlords not having the ability to move things forward. Even after, you know, a number of months of relief and PPP and additional stipends to now there's potential for, uh, you know, hardest to seek renegotiation or relief. So it's, it's been a challenging year for everyone.
Yeah. And it's good all, when it gets opened up, it's going to be backlog for a year's worth.
Yeah, it's, it's going to be challenging when we get into twenty twenty-one and things.
I mean, it was busy before. Now I don't know how they're going to get a year's worth of cases in with the new cases coming in at that point. It's going to be very difficult to do. Anyone else? And George, anything else to add?
No, I just, again, I just wanted to highlight that for council so council's aware.
Okay. City managers report.
Thank you, council president. Um, as everyone's aware today, the governor announced that the Batavia Zip Pool one four oh two oh plus a little part south of us has been placed in the yellow zone COVID protocol. Um, the yellow zone is the least restrictive zone. Businesses can still all open and operate. My understanding, and I'm bringing it up on my phone, um, is that there are some restrictions inside of restaurants. Um, the dining, indoor and outdoor dining permitted four person maximum per table. And bars and restaurants close at ten P M. for on-premise consumption. Also, non-residential gatherings, twenty-five people maximum indoors and outdoors. And residential gatherings, you all know, have been, you've been asked to keep less than ten people in your house. So that's not the full restrictions of the orange zone, but it's a warning that our geographic area is moving into a zone with increase in COVID cases. So I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that and I pointed that out. Um, a few other items, uh, working on the budget, you'll have the budget presentation to you before January fifteenth. So the meeting before that is January eleventh. So I'm sorry, you will have to come. Um, as, um, city attorney mentioned, the police stakeholder group has been meeting almost on a bi-weekly basis. We have a survey out there. We're asking everyone to engage, take the survey and promote it. Um, I think we've had a lot of information given to the group. I think the group is very pleased with the level of professionalism of our police chief and the officers and their policies. And now we're kind of digging into other deeper societal issues that I think was the intent of the executive order. Um, lastly, the, um, Miami Marlins have not, have decided not to continue their affiliation with the Muk Dogs for the next year. So, um, having calls weekly with the New York State Pen League, determining, um, how they'd like to proceed. And we have a lot of interested, um, groups at various levels that want to play ball in Batavia in the summer. So more to come. Thank you.
Um, the stakeholders meeting, how are they doing that? Is it Zoom or is that open to the public or?
It's Zoom and open to the public.
How do you get access to those links?
We can certainly send them out. Um, I don't know if the press publishes them. I'll let the press.
You send them out to the public.
Okay.
If you could send me an email, I'd appreciate it.
We'll make sure council hears it.
That reminds me, I put it on my schedule. I'd like to pop in once in a while and see how it's going.
Absolutely. Yep. And we're at the point where we're just starting to draft the plan.
Rachel.
Yes.
Since you addressed me.
Yes.
The last one, Howard, put the entire meeting through in a video.
He did stream it live as well.
And he wrote a story afterward, so.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Are you, are you finished or?
I think so.
Um, the other thing, the other question I had is if we could, uh, just to help with resolutions, if we could, uh, maybe list the address of the company we're doing business with and if we are to piece something out out of like Empire Access, if we put their corporate headquarters on there, it makes it easier for the public to know exactly how we, who we're doing business with, if it's a local community company or not. Um, a, a citizen from the community pointed that out to me today and I told him I would bring that up before you and, and make that mention. So just, it's kind of something the county does now and it would kind of focus on exactly who we're doing business with and it would be all there. Be easier to keep track of years from now. If somebody looked at that resolution, they'd know that Empire might be in a different building and they wouldn't know the address and via historical records. So I think we should keep track of that.
Sure. I don't have any issue.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Any questions for the city?
I have a question. Um, Rachel, regarding our existing contract that we have, um, with minor league baseball for the stadium. That was a two-year contract, I believe. Now where do we, where does this all fall under, under these new developments?
Sure. It expires in April twenty twenty-two.
Okay.
But if the Pen League no longer operates this team, there's no team existing, um, then we wouldn't be obligated to those contractual terms. We could seek to contract with another entity to play baseball on that field.
Uh, then vice versa, they're no longer obligated under their contract as well? Uh, unlike a commercial lease where a company goes out of business, but they're still obligated?
I would have looked to the city attorney to answer that better than I can.
Really, that is chasing down a pen league in minor league baseball, I think is going to be a rather unlikely route for success. This is something that's gone on with at least forty or fifty other communities across the spectrum for the minor league contraction. Um, we can dive into the details in a attorney-client discussion, but I would say in general, it might benefit the community to look at other options.
Well, and I'm not doubting that. I'm, I'm just saying, what, what are their obligations? I'm not saying that we would go after them, um, to force them to, because it would be to our advantage to get out of the contract. So we can move forward with a new tenant, which we wouldn't be able to if they, if they continually had that contract. But my concern would be, I mean, would they typically continue to pay on that or not?
So we don't actually have a payment related to that contract. They take care of the maintenance of the field to playing condition. And they take care of the electricity. So there is no payment obligation to the city, um, if that answers that question. And they've been very communicative about this process. You know, they're upset as well of these changes at, at major league level and that's bringing down to the local minor league community level.
Um, how soon then, Rachel, would we be able to move forward with some of these interesting parties?
Um, well, I think there's, there's a lot of work to do and, um, we'll have to, uh, we'll have to see how we can get it done. And I hope that by February, we would have some sort of solution for the community.
So do you foresee, um, is your best professional opinion, do you foresee us having some activity at that stadium this coming summer, spring summer?
I would absolutely enjoy that. If we did.
Mr. President, do we have to serve that notice that we'll be discontinuing the lease?
Um, I don't know. Do we? Or is it automatically, they're the ones who are like leaving the lease. It's not us doing it.
Yeah. I think we're going to get a discussion about notices, claims and things of that sort in the public forum. Uh, I'd be happy to have that conversation offline in the attorney-client setting.
Got you. Very good. Anything else? Rachel, are you, anything else for your reports?
No, thank you very much.
Any reports?
I don't have a lot to report, but, uh, because my meeting is until eight-thirty tomorrow morning. However, there are wreaths on all poles downtown and I'm reminding everybody to look in the paper or in the Penny Saver or in the Batavian, because you can vote on them and they actually get a prize for the best wreath and they're really very attractive. Thank you.
Anyone else?
You know what I have to do? I just, this is a curiosity question, just because I saw it on Memories of Batavia. Whatever happened to like, I mean, where are all those old decorations that we used to, you know, like the candy canes and stuff you used to hang from the, from the. I don't know. I'm just, I'm sure those things are rotted by now.
The J C's used to purchase them in May Day.
Oh, okay. I wonder too.
I remember those. There was an old picture recently online.
Candy canes, canals from every outpost we had, yeah. Just curious. Probably in somebody's warehouse someplace, I would imagine.
Um, any, any other committee reports? Okay. Uh, unfinished business? I don't believe there's anything we moved over to our new business. Uh, okay. Good business. Resolution eighty-five, twenty twenty, Mr. Byakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution to amend the investment policy to allow the city manager to add designated depositors to asset funds established in financial institutions. And I'd like to point out if our last conference.
Meeting, it was amended and it states the manager consultation with the city front treasurer and deputy director of finance authorized deposits upon so.
Yeah, we made that amendment and then that's been added to the official resolution. And is there any other corrections in that resolution that anybody noticed? Cause that's, that's been added in there now.
Right, right. Correct.
It's one of the first things I looked at when I read the pack and I remember we talked about it, about having at least another couple set of eyes on it. Just in the event that maybe somebody was missing something, another set of eyes on it would just kind of give us some protection there. Any other concerns or questions in reference to that? Okay, call the roll, please. I'll second. Oh, sorry. Seconded by Mr. Bailey. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Byakowski.
Yes.
Jankowski.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Pacino.
Yes.
Canelli.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Briggs.
Yes.
Christian.
Yes.
Karas.
Yes.
Okay. Resolution eighty-six, twenty twenty, Mr. Canelli, please.
Thank you, council president. I move, I move a resolution to grant the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, DEC, access to two sixty-seven Bank Street for remedial action in relation to the Batavia Iron and Metal Site.
Seconded by Mr. McGinnis. Now, any discussion? Any questions or concerns? Okay, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Canelli.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Briggs.
Yes.
Christian.
Yes.
Karas.
Yes.
Byakowski.
Yes.
Jankowski.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Pacino.
Yes.
Okay. Resolution eighty-seven, twenty twenty, Mr. McGinnis, please.
Thank you, council president. Excuse me. I move a, a resolution to enter into an agreement with Empire Access for fiber internet service for the city of Batavia.
Seconded by Mr. Bailey. Any questions or concerns? Okay, call the roll, please.
Councilmember McGinnis.
Yes.
Briggs.
Yes.
Christian.
Yes.
Karas.
Yes.
Byakowski.
Yes.
Jankowski.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Pacino.
Yes.
Canelli.
Yes.
Okay. Resolution eighty-eight, twenty twenty, Ms. Pacino, please.
Thank you, council president. I move a resolution scheduling regular council meetings through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
Any questions or concerns?
You got to have a second to that.
Oh, second. Getting out of sync here. Cause I have a thought in my head and we need to double check and make sure that that business, conference business. Some people do plan ahead for the year and they want to know, they show up at some meetings and not others. So we need to verify. Whatever we start out with, it will rotate. So that's the only caveat. The dates are going to stay the same. The housekeeping part of actual the type of meeting.
Yeah, I, I think it'll actually have to be in a, something with the manager, you know, have to be a conference meeting, business meeting, and then another conference meeting to follow it.
Just to get the year started and get it synchronized.
And she explained because normally our December meeting would be business meeting, then a conference meeting for the January meeting.
Right. And we doubled them up.
At least you told me I might be wrong, so we'll get it right.
Having a conference meeting afterwards for the next week.
Right. Cause you, like John said, so yeah, I, I know we're going to iron it out. I just want to put that caveat in there. The dates are going to be the same.
Right.
Housekeeping part, we'll get that squared away after we get caught up because of the unusual December meeting. So. Um, any other questions or concerns on that? Okay, please call the roll.
Councilmember Pacino.
Yes.
Canelli.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Briggs.
Yes.
Christian.
Yes.
Karas.
Yes.
Byakowski.
Yes.
Jankowski. Bailey.
Yes.
Resolution eighty-nine, twenty twenty, Mr. Karas, please.
Thank you, council president. I move a resolution to enter into an agreement with Architectural Resources for engineering services for the DRI Jackson Square project.
Seconded by Ms. Briggs. Any questions or concerns? Okay, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Karas.
Yes.
Byakowski.
Yes.
Jankowski.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Pacino.
Yes.
Canelli.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Briggs.
Yes.
Christian.
Yes.
Resolution ninety, twenty twenty, Mr. Bailey, please.
Thank you, council president. I move a resolution to appoint members of various city committees and boards.
Seconded by Mr. Karas. Any questions or concerns? I just would like to say, I hope the public will volunteer for these boards and these committees. We need their help. And, uh, it's, it's a rewarding experience. And if you're not sure, then contact the city manager's office and they'll explain to you the, the duties and maybe the time constraints that might be on you, but I, I think it's, it's worth it. We, we really need your help. So consider signing up for a committee or board. Other than that, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Pacino.
Yes.
Canelli.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Briggs.
Yes.
Christian.
Yes.
Karas.
Yes.
Byakowski.
Yes.
Jankowski.
Yes. Resolution ninety-one, twenty, Ms. Christian, please.
Thank you. Um, this, Jankowski, is a packet that I mentioned on Burns' name in this because it's not included in here.
Uh, it, it should be on your packet when it's on your desk.
It's the new one. It's the new one.
Here, yeah.
So if you want to, fine.
Yeah. Thank you. I move a resolution appointing the part-time city court judge, Thomas A. Burns will be appointed to the position on January the first, twenty twenty-one, and the term as city court judge is due to expire on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
Seconded by Mr. Bailey. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Christian.
Yes.
Karas.
Yes.
Byakowski.
No.
Jankowski.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Pacino.
Yes.
Canelli.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Briggs.
Yes.
Resolution ninety-two, twenty twenty, Mr. Bailey.
Thank you, council president. I move a resolution to support submission of a New York Main Street grant application by Batavia Development Corporation.
Seconded by Ms. Briggs. Any questions or concerns? Any additional questions for Andrew while he's here? Okay, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Pacino.
Yes.
Canelli.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Briggs.
Yes.
Christian. Karas.
Yes.
Byakowski.
Yes.
Jankowski.
Yes. If you would bring us into executive session and we did add a few, not just.
We did add some. Whereas Article seven, section one oh five one H of the Public Officers Law permits the legislative body of municipality to enter into executive session to discuss the proposed acquisition, sale or lease of real property or the proposed acquisition of securities or sale or exchange of securities held by such a public body, but only when publicity is exchanged in effect of value thereof. Whereas Article seven, section one oh five one E of the Public Officers Law permits the legislative body of municipality to enter into executive session to discuss collective negotiations pursuant to Article fifty of the Batavia Development Law. And whereas Article seven, section one oh five one F of the Public Service Law, Public Officers Law, permits the legislative body of the municipality to enter into executive discussion, session to discuss the medical, financial, credit or employment history of a particular person or corporation or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or corporation. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Batavia and upon approval of this motion, the city council does hereby enter into executive session.
Seconded by Mr. Bailey. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Pacino.
Yes.
Canelli.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Briggs.
Yes.
Christian. Karas.
Yes.
Byakowski.
Yes.
Jankowski. Bailey.
Yes.